Alright, so we're recording now. So let me click over to this PowerPoint. Alright, so test one, survival guide. So, a little bit about the exam. There are two parts, a group and an individual. She is going to talk about how these two parts are going to work in class either tomorrow or Friday. So, don't get stressed out. It's laid out in the syllabus, but she will talk about it more in depth. Basically, the individual is going to open Friday at 5:00 and close Sunday at midnight. And this is 28 questions and you have 40 minutes to do it. This is online through Proctorio. So, if you guys haven't used Proctorio before, make sure you have that installed, which we did in class, so you should be good to go. Now, the individual is 85% of your test grade. The other 15% of your test grade comes from the group exam, which you will take next Monday in seat. And we randomly put you in groups. And it'll be, you'll be grouped through collaborate because you know, social distancing. But you'll get a similar exam with about 30 questions on it. And you'll have 30 minutes to do so. So this is just, you're able to kind of talk through your answers and be like, oh, I kind of got this, I think I got this question wrong on the individual because that makes sense the way you explain it. Because the goal for this class is not to memorize the information, is to learn it. So that, um, she started doing this four semesters to get, four semesters ago. And it has really, really helped from what I've seen. Now, all of the test questions are going to be multiple choice. Every single test question in Bio 130 that you see will be multiple choice. Okay, so now we're going to get into the meat and potatoes of this stuff. Alright, so starting off, we have levels of organization. You go from biggest to smallest is how I set this list up. So, the biggest is the biosphere, which is the Earth. And then you have the ecosystem, so all things in an area that's either biotic or a, or, or abiotic and how they interact. So this is all living and non-living things in a particular area. Alright, a community and a population. These are the two that get mixed up a lot. So, a community is two or more species in a certain area. So if we were talking about the community at UC, we would talk about the people and squirrels in the trees. Now, if we were talking about a population at UC, we would just talk about the squirrels. It's only one species. Okay? So a community, multiple species. Population is just one species. Alright, now, an organism, an organ and tissue, I'm not really, want to talk about those, they're self-explanatory. Excuse me, and then the cell is the smallest unit of life. Alright, themes of biology. You have genetics and evolution and cell theory. And if I were you, I would know how to do the moth example that we did in class. Where the steampunk moth example, I would make sure you understand the reasoning behind that, make sure you know how to do it. And how you can do this problem is base it down on one general principle. When you really compact the theory of evolution, it's just down to dead things don't make babies. If you're not fit for the environment, you will die before you make a baby. I.e., the next generation won't look like you. It'll look like the ones that survived. Okay? So then, cell theory. A cell is the lowest level of organization that can be alive. That's what we just talked about in this hierarchy level. Alright, parts of an experiment. You have the independent variable, the IV, and the dependent variable, the DV. I know you guys have played with these a lot in lab. Research lesson two, you had to pick out the IVs and DVs. So you guys should know these pretty good by now. The independent variable is just, is what you as the researcher manipulate. So think, so I can change it. Independent, I can change it. So, if we were measuring, um, let's go back to the fertilizer example we used in class. The fertile, the fertilizer would be the independent variable. We would be, we would be adding fertilizer to one pot, not adding fertilizer to another pot. That's what we are changing, that's what we are manipulating. So the dependent variable is just what is being measured. So, in that, excuse me, in that fertilizer example, what we can measure would be like stem length, how tall the plants are growing. Now, another good thing to have an experiment is a control group. And that's the group that you keep the same. So, in the fertilizer, you don't add the fertilizer. So, think about it, if you put fertilizer in a plant and you say this plant is 10 inches tall, that really doesn't mean anything unless you can compare it to a plant that doesn't have fertilizer. So if you say, a plant without fertilizer grows six inches, but a plant that did have fertilizer grew 10 inches, that has merit in it, that is comparable. Okay? And then lastly, a controlled experiment. This just means that all variables are the same except for the IV. So, that means that you're using the same type of plant, the same type of soil, the same amount of water, same amount of sunlight, all that. The only thing that is changing is the fertilizer. Okay? So now we have inductive versus deductive reasoning. Know an example. So know how to pick out an example of inductive or deductive. So remember, inductive is the generalizations. So that's where you take, that's the upside-down funnels. That's where you have the evidence, I'm abbreviating that. And you come to a very wide conclusion. So if I say, okay, if I'm looking at bacteria and I say this white slimy bacteria is E. coli, so all white slimy bacteria must be E. coli. That's a generalization. You take one or two pieces of evidences, pieces of evidence, and then you make a very broad conclusion, usually about a whole group. Now, deductive, that's something that like a detective could do. So, deductive, detective. That's where you take the funnel and you have lots of evidence coming down to one solid conclusion. Alright? So, we can go like the murder, the murder mystery example. You have somebody who, you have a video of them leaving the victim's house. And you have their prints on the gun and you have a threatening voicemail and you have motive. I watch a lot of Dateline, I'm pretty sure you can tell, I get really excited about that. You have all of this evidence, you can come to one logical conclusion that Fred is the murderer. But you can't say that Fred killed, that Fred killed all victims who were murdered in their house. You just have evidence that he killed one. Okay? Now, hypothesis, theory and law. You all need to word associate these a lot. And that's how I learned them. So, a hypothesis is testable. You have to be able to easily, or somewhat easily, cast a hypothesis. Is a prediction, it's an educated guess, it's usually an, an if-then statement. Now, a theory, a theory is very, very broad. So it explains laws and observations. So an example of that would be like cell theory. In cell theory, we're not just talking about one thing. We're talking about, cells are the smallest unit of life in the world. We're talking about the cell membrane and all this other stuff. So cell theory is a very, very large concept. Now, a law is very generalized. So it's a statement based on repeated observations and tests to predict future events. So when I think of law, I think of law of gravity. So if I drop a pencil, it's going to fall to the floor. If I drop a pencil two feet of, two feet above the ground, it's going to hit the floor. If I drop a pencil 2,000 feet above the ground, it's still going to fall. That is the law of gravity, it's very general. It just means stuff can't float in the air. It usually explains one or two principles where a theory can explain multiple, multiple principles. Alright, if I go too fast for anybody, please stop me and let me know. I'm just trying to kind of get through this because I know there's a lot of material. But please, if I go too fast or you want to go back and see something, stop me and let me know, okay? Alright, so functional groups. Now we're moving on to the biomolecule section. Guys, you need to know your functional groups. There is no way around it for this exam. And not even for this exam. The final is cumulative for this class. And when you get into organic chemistry or biochemistry or any of those classes of that sort, the basic knowledge of these functional groups is already going to put you ahead. So now let's look at, I'm going to start at hydroxyl, I'm kind of going to start in the middle. So hydroxyl is just this little OH group. So remember, break down the word. Hydro, hydrogen, oxal, oxygen. You have a hydrogen and an oxygen. Okay? Carbonil. Remember, these R groups just mean other. So the main thing that you're looking for is a C double bonded to an oxygen. Alright, now carbaxyl. This carbaxyl has components of the hydroxyl. Let me change colors. So it has hydroxyl right here and it has the carbonil right here. So it's kind of like a combination of both. And it's kind of intuitive from its name. Carbaxyl kind of sounds like carbonil and hydroxyl together. So you can also think of this like, this has a hydroxyl group on it with this carbonil on it. Um, I've had kids remember it like this. I've also had students remember it between carbaxyl and carbonil. Carbaxyl has the extra oxygen. So, a carbonil has one, a carbaxyl has two. So the one that sounds like oxygen, oxal, oxygen has the extra oxygen. I've also had people remember it that way. Okay? Alright, and now we have an amino group. Who can tell me where an amino group is found? And which biomolecule would I find an amino group? Proteins, thank you Abby, beautiful. Good, good, good. So, an amino group is just a nitrogen with these two hydrogens and then an extra something hanging off of it. And you would find this in a protein. So, another important thing that we need to know, let me change colors here. Another important thing that we need to know is that these, these are mainly polar groups. Now, why would I make the statement that these are polar functional groups? Now, don't look at like this molecule here, we're just looking at this thing hanging off the side. Why could I say that those functional groups are mainly polar? They have oxygen, good. So, what would be, okay, I'll just do this. Why are you doing that? Alright. Let me, shouldn't have made my chain that big. Okay, what would you call this? This big thing right here is just a bunch of carbons with a whole bunch of hydrogens hanging off of it. Does anybody remember the name or the molecule that this is in? Hydrocarbon chain, yes, good job. Alright, so this is a hydrocarbon chain and it's found in lipids. Now, would this be polar or non-polar? Non-polar, good. The chain is non-polar, good job y'all. Alright, I'm going to erase this because it kind of bled onto my other ones. Alright. But make sure that you can identify your functional groups. Alright, making and breaking molecules. This is where you come in with hydrolysis and dehydration synthesis. So, remember, break apart the word. Hydrogen means water, lysis means to break. So, the structure of this word literally means to break by adding water or to break with water. So, hydrolysis is where you're going to take a big polymer, you're going to add water and you're going to make two monomers. So if I were to set this up as like a weird equation type thing, I would say one polymer plus H2O equals two monomers. And guys, this is where the review sheet, I believe is under week three. The hydrolysis and dehydration synthesis practice worksheet, I think it's the name of it. That is very helpful. So remember, making, so hydrolysis, that occurs at hydroxyl groups. Especially for carbs. So when you have like Janet, I'm doing this lazily, that's my molecule. Don't tell Dr. Sun on me, he would have, he would die if he saw how I was drawing this. Alright, so we have this. Alright, so we have these molecules. We want to join them together by trooping out a water. And now we just have one big, yeah, that's weird. One big, I'm going to make oxygen black so we can tell the difference. One big oxygen. Okay? Alright, so dehydration synthesis. Dehydration means to take away water. And this is kind of intuitive, sorry about that. When you get dehydrated, it means that you don't have enough water in your system. Same terminology with that. And then synthesis to make something. So this word literally means taking away water to make something. So we're going to make a polymer from two monomers by taking away water. So, let's set up our little equation E thing here. So we're going to take monomer plus monomer equals polymer plus water. And remember that breaking occurs at the shared oxygen. So if I were to say, here's, here's my polymer. I'm going to add in, I'm going to add in H2O and it's going to break. So then it's going to be, this one, want to keep that oxygen. But we're going to add an H. This one is going to get the OH from that, that water molecule. Let me make this oxygen black so you can tell that it's an oxygen, not my lazy, my lazy molecule. Okay? Please make sure that you understand the concept of this. It, it really builds on each other, especially when we get to metabolism, which I believe is coming up shortly. Okay, so now let's get into the fun stuff, the actual biomolecules. So, carbohydrates. The function is building blocks, ooh, that's not an underline. Building blocks and fuels. So you can identify a carbohydrate by the hydroxyl group. So we have hydroxyl, 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 a lot of hydroxyls. And one carbonil group, we can mark over here on this one. And that's your carbonil group. Alright, so in this, a monosaccharide is the monomer of a carb. So saccharide, let's look at this second part of the word. Saccharide means sugar. So when we're talking about saccharide, we're talking about a carb or a type of sugar. And then we'll just break this down, mono means one, di means two. We know poly just means more than two in science. And an example of this is the starch, so like what we find in potatoes. I don't know why potatoes came to my head, it's just the first thing I think of when I think of starch. Alright, so now we're going to move on to lipids. Now, remember, when we talk about lipids, we're talking about like a fatty acid chain. Phospholipids are more complex lipids that we are going to get to in a minute. Alright? So lipids have a, let me highlight, alright, lipids have a carbaxyl group and very few oxygen. So they have a hydrocarbon chain or ring, which makes them hydrophobic. So remember, hydrophobic is another way of saying non-polar and a fear of water, because that's what hydrophobic means, right? Hydro means water, phobic means fear. Which I say down here, non-polar means does not mix well with water. It is hydrophobic. There are three major types, phospholipids, which I have a whole slide on. Steroids, which are the four ring structures. Fatty acids, which are, that's an example of. Okay? Phospholipids. So these bad boys make up the cell membrane. They can, and why they're so special and why they can make up the cell membrane is they have a polar head and non-polar tail. So remember, when they line up to make the cell membrane, they line up in a bilayer and then they create this membrane. So we have the polar pink, so polar, 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 polar. And then this yellow is all non-polar. So phospholipids are made up of a glycerol group, a phosphate group and two fatty acid tails, one saturated, one unsaturated. Alright, now we're going to transition over to proteins, which are the most versatile biomolecules. So, an example of something that you could use a protein for in the body would be an enzyme. And the reason I mention enzymes now is because in the next chapter, maybe two chapters, we are going to focus very heavily on enzymes. And we can relate this back because we know that enzymes are proteins. So we kind of know a little bit about how they're made. So every protein has an amino group. An R group, remember, which just means other. And a carbaxyl group, which is also found in a lipid. Alright, so an amino group, I want to point this out because a lot of people in the in-class activities were calling it an amino acid instead of an amino group. So I really want to distinguish that. An amino group is what we saw on the functional group slide. It's a nitrogen with two hydrogens and an R group. An amino acid is a monomer of a polypeptide. So a monomer of a polypeptide would be the monomer of the primary level of a protein. So, for your wealth of knowledge, if she says polypeptide, she's talking about a primary protein. And, I mean, if you want to know it, you could know that an amino acid is a monomer of protein. Levels of, levels of organization. Guys, there's no getting around this. You're going to need to memorize which structures are 3D, which are 2D and the bonds that hold each structures together. So first, we'll start with our 2D structures, which is primary and secondary, so these are 2D. So, primary is just a flat sequence of amino acids linked together. And they are linked by peptide bonds. So how I remember this is primary peptide, the two Ps go together. Alright, now secondary. These have your alpha helixes, so like your swirls and your kinks. And then it might go back to swirls and then it might kink. Such a beautiful drawing of a secondary protein. Um, but these have your alpha helixes and your beta plethysheets. And they are held by hydrogen bonds. And guys, I've been doing this for four years and I cannot find a good mnemonic for secondary held by hydrogen bonds. So if you come up with one, please share. But I don't have one right now. Tertiary though, I have a good one for tertiary. Tertiary is where you start your first 3D structure. So let's change colors here. So tertiary and quaternary are 3D, which means they're actual functional proteins. 3D. So tertiary are held by side chain interactions, which is just like that R group. Now, you don't need to know the types of interactions that it could possibly be held by. It could be ionic, hydrogen, hydrophobic, a lot of things. You just need to know they're held by side chain interactions. So my mnemonic for this is Terry is a side chick. Tertiary, side chain interactions, Terry is a side chick. Alright, so last is quaternary. And this is multiple 3D polypeptide chains. And these are held by hydrogen or ionic bonds. So how I remember this is if I had a quarter for every HI I heard, quarter, cautionary, HI, hydrogen, ionic. It's creative, but you kinda have to be with these names. Okay? All right, now our last but not least biomolecule is nucleic acid. Excuse me. So you will need to know that every nucleic acid contains phosphate group, five carbon sugar, and a nitrogenous base. And for those of you who know, like from a previous biology class, those nitrogenous bases are like your ATCG. I got a lot of people, well, I got a lot of questions on the Socrative where people were confused with what a nitrogenous base is. If you've never heard of ATCG, don't stress. We will talk about that in depth, I believe, in like test three material. But if you were confused about what exactly a nitrogenous base was and you have heard of ATCG, that might put things into context. All right, types of nucleic acids. So there are two major types, DNA and RNA. So I like to think of DNA as the wealthy businessman. He's wealthy, so he can eat a lot, so he's bigger, he's double stranded. He kinda stays in his house and he just tells people what to do. He's important. The company couldn't run without him, but he doesn't actively go do stuff. He just sits in one place and gives orders. So DNA is double stranded, stays in the nucleus, and it aids in long-term genetic storage. Okay, now let's compare that to RNA. I like to think of him as the working class man. He's got a family to feed, so we can't eat as much, so he's a little thinner, he's single stranded. He actually has to leave his house and he has to go do things. So he leaves the nucleus. And he aids in gene expression and regulation. So he actually does something other than just store information. He actively does something within the cell. Okay? Am I recording? I am recording. I just had like, I just had a thought, I didn't remember if I hit record or not. Okay, plasma membrane. So remember, all plasma membranes are made up of a phospholipid bilayer. And plasma membranes are present in all cells. Now, not every cell has to have a cell wall, but every cell has to have a plasma membrane. So this is the same thing that we were talking about earlier with the heads and the tails. The heads of the phospholipid bilayer sticks out on either side of the cell. So that's where your polar heads come in. So I label these as A or polar. Now, inside the membrane is nonpolar, so that's this area right here labeled B. Okay, so all cells contain plasma membranes, cytoplasm, some type of organelle, and DNA. Now, plasma membrane, we've already talked about that. Cytoplasm, I'll just say that cytoplasm is kinda like the goo that the cell stuff floats in. It's like the liquid in your cell. Now, organelles, do not get these confused with membrane-bound organelles. Because what type of cells are the only type of cells that have membrane-bound organelles? What type of cells have membrane-bound organelles? Eukaryotic, good. Compared to what other type of cell that does not have membrane-bound organelles? Prokaryotic. Good. Good. All right, so all cells have organelles, and this is because of ribosomes. So ribosomes do not have a membrane and they are present in all cells. Okay? Now, all cells also contain DNA. And eukaryotic cells is found in the nucleus, as we just said. And prokaryotic cells, they don't have a nucleus, so it's kinda floating. And you'll learn more about where it is in a prokaryotic cell in microbiology. Now you guys will take with Dr. Watson. So we'll just leave that concept to him. All right, so the differences between a prokaryotic and eukaryotic. So let's start with eukaryotic because that's usually more, more intuitive. An example would be a human cell. They're usually larger. They never have a sticky cell capsule, and that's pretty intuitive. If you touch your skin, it shouldn't be sticky. There's DNA inside of the nucleus and they do have membrane-bound organelles. So on the flip side of that, sorry, does someone have a question? I thought I heard a notification. I'm hearing stuff now. Okay, so prokaryotic, on the flip side of that, an example would be bacteria. They're usually smaller than eukaryotic. The cell wall is present and is covered in a sticky capsule. DNA is not in the nucleus because it doesn't have a nucleus because they don't have any membrane-bound organelles. Now, we're gonna talk about this stuff tomorrow, but I am still wanting to cover it because it still will be on your exam. All right, so we're kinda introducing this stuff now, but we will talk about this tomorrow. All right, so the nucleus contains the cell's genes and controls growth and reproduction through DNA. So the nucleus is DNA's house, if you would like to think of it like that. The nuclear envelope, it's the membrane that encloses and protects the nucleus. It's an envelope. When you mail a letter, if people still mail, mail letters nowadays, but let's pretend you mail a letter, you're not just going to stick a stamp on the outside of your letter and send it. You're going to put it in an envelope, into a barrier to protect it and send the letter. All right, so ribosomes. These are the site of protein synthesis. So we talked about proteins, they're very important. They act as enzymes and structures and they're the most versatile biomolecule. Ribosomes are the little things that make them. And ribosomes can be in two places. They can be bound or free. And remember, this is just in eukaryotic cells. I should probably write that. We are focusing on eukaryotic cells. That's horrible. You will focus on prokaryotic cells when you get into micro with Dr. Watson. So if a ribosome is bound, it is stuck to the rough ER or the rough endoplasmic reticulum. And if it's free, then it's just floating in the cytoplasm. All right, so the rough endoplasmic reticulum or the rough ER is the place for, is the home for bound ribosomes. And it distributes transport vesicles. And transport vesicles are basically like the cars that things get in to be transported in or out of the cell. And we'll learn more about that when we get to membrane transport. So we have the smooth endoplasmic reticulum. It lacks ribosomes. And this synthesizes, y'all, my handwriting needs help today. All right, it synthesizes carbs and lipids. So it's smooth because it doesn't have any ribosomes, but it aids in the synthesis and manufacturing of two of our other biomolecules, carbs and lipids. So lysosomes, this is like the garbage disposal of the cell, is a sack of hydrolytic enzymes that breaks things down. So if you make a faulty protein, hopefully one of your cell checkpoints will recognize that protein is faulty and then it'll send it to a lysosome. It's your garbage disposal or Pac-Man. It eats things that you don't want. So lastly, we have the Golgi apparatus, aka the Golgi body. You will see both of them on this PowerPoint. I specifically put the Golgi apparatus because most people have seen Golgi body in high school, at least I did, so. So the Golgi apparatus is kinda like the FedEx center of the cell. It modifies the products from the ER, sorts and packages that material into transport vesicles, and then it'll ship it out of the cell. And the Golgi apparatus is made up of cisternae, which are just flattened membrane sacks. So it's almost like if you put some type of gel in plastic bags, like pudding. If you wanted to put pudding in plastic bags and then stack them up, that's kind of what the Golgi body is synonymous to. I am so sorry, y'all. My stutter has been so bad today and I have absolutely no idea, so please excuse me. Okay, now, next last thing about the cell is you need to know how to label the animal cells. And if I'm not mistaken, you guys done something with this in lab. So definitely be able to point out the Golgi, the nucleus, mitochondria. Here's a lysosome, cell membrane, things of that nature. Okay, now, last thing, we will definitely hit this in class tomorrow. This is the pathway of protein synthesis. So if I wanna make a protein, I'm gonna start in the nucleus, go to a ribosome, and then the ribosome is going to be free in the cytozone or rough in the rough endoplasmic reticulum. And then that material is going to go to the Golgi body, where it is going to get packaged for shipment. And then it is going to be put into a transport vesicle to be shipped out of the cell. So this is a very important pathway to know and we will, we will go over this tomorrow in class. So from what I understand, the material on the test will just be what we cover tomorrow. So however far we get tomorrow is what will be on the exam. I think that we will cover up the protein synthesis. If we get a little bit into membrane transport, I will send some updated slides for you all. I went ahead and took all of membrane transport out of this PowerPoint because I don't think we will get to it, but on the off-chase that we do, I will send out an updated, an updated PowerPoint. Okay, guys, you all totally got this. Remember, you have all kinds of bonus that is, that is applicable to this exam. If you came to one of my first two study sessions, you get one bonus point. If you come to both of them, you got two. If you went to an office hours appointment with her, that is one point. If you went to a tutoring appointment, I'm gonna stop sharing. If you went to a tutoring appointment, that's one point. So please take advantage. There is still time to make a tutoring appointment if you guys are struggling. Please reach out for help. If you need anything, please email me. Let me know if you have any questions. I'm going to send this PowerPoint out as soon as I get off of here, so you guys will be able to have that resource. Remember, these sessions are all recorded, as are all of the lectures. Those lectures are all recorded, so if you missed something and you wanna go back, you can totally do that. So let me see if I took a picture to get y'all's attendance. I did. So you all are free to go. I am going to hang out. If you all have questions about the exam, please, please stay. I'm here to help. If not, I will see you all in class tomorrow.